I have my mothers, and my mother was an only child, so I also have my grandmothers. And like, and it's all that gold, man.
No, I know. Yeah, mine too. It's the Lennox of the Golds.
Mm-hmm. What we'll be thinking.
Yep.
All right, everybody, welcome. Hello.
Hi.
Hi. So, welcome to the April 4th, 2023 Regular Meeting of Foxborough School Committee. We'll call it "To Order." And first, we always start by saying, this meeting is being recorded. Thanks to our friends at AFCA, Foxborough Cable Access. And these meetings are available online for the foreseeable future, which I think means forever and ever and ever. So, welcome, everybody. We're going to start with open public comment. And seeing that we have about, yep, 10 folks, nine to 10 folks, who are ready to come on up and talk, we'll do that. I'll call it in order. If, and this is similar to what I said last meeting, if you see in the crowd here that there are folks that you actually want to sit with and speak with, feel free to pass until they come up or call them up with you. Because the, I think the greatest benefit is for us hearing a range of ideas and a range of comments. If they happen to be 10 folks in here who all believe the same thing, come on up at the same time, and we'll acknowledge all of you. When you do come up, all we ask is that you speak your name into the mic. Mostly, and that's, we can all hear you in the room, but it's for folks who are watching online and for the quality of the recording. Because as many of us know, people do log in and look at the meetings that have happened in the past. So it's just good to be recognized. So, I think that's everything. And I will remind the adults in the room that we want to keep our comments to three minutes. The reason I say "adults" is we've never had somebody who's a student actually go over. And the only people who've ever, ever gone over are adults. It's just, I think, I don't know, what we're used to. Anyway, with that, and, and folks, just be bold about deferring to somebody else or whatnot. I have Heather Harding. Make sure that's, the mic is hot, Ms. Harding.
Workin', can you hear me?
Yes, yes. Good, yeah, we're good. Thank you.
Awesome. Heather Harding, 14 North High Street. So, I can see how there could have been confusion, given what's transpired in the recent years with respect to our mascot. Some things have an "F," some have an "FHS," some have an "F with feathers," some have our mascot. And I think AJ did a really good job at the last meeting of clearing up and explaining to the group that, you know, it wasn't the coaches, the students, the parents, or any local Indigenous peoples who wanted the logo removed. So I was glad that, you know, that, that issue was put to rest. But this issue in general has the potential to really divide our town and to take one more thing away from our kids who've already endured more than they should have over the last three years with COVID. Not to mention the costs involved. I'm, I'm sure you guys all at least watched the CIP presentation, and you know that the schools put in a CIP request for $90,000 to purchase some music equipment and some copiers. And that request wasn't able to be filled due to lack of funding. Half of the request was deferred until the funds could be available. So, I just thought maybe instead of, you know, potentially spending money on this, perhaps you guys could focus on fulfilling that request for the new musical equipment and copiers, instead of making the kids wait till the next budget cycle. I mean, some of them are going to graduate, and it's a long time for them to wait. If we could find the money and maybe spend it on that instead of this. At the last meeting, the question was raised as to whether or not we have other things in town that pay respect to Indigenous peoples. And our town does, in fact, have a history of showing tribute to the Native Americans in multiple ways. Many of our streets, bodies of water, recreational areas take their names from Native American culture. Coacassett Street, Coacassett Lake, Coacassett River Recreational Area, meaning place of towering pines. Nippon City Street, Nippon City Height Ave., Nippon City Reservoir, meaning spreading water. Lake Merrimashie and Merrimashie Road, meaning laughing water. The first settlers' roads and boundary marker on South Street is a tribute to an old Indian trail that runs from Dedham to Bristol. Our memorial hall has an amazing Native American exhibit. We have local businesses that sell Native American items. The Schneider Learning Center has a whole section that speaks to Native American flora and fauna. Foxborough's steeped in a history of paying tribute to our Indigenous people. The census says we have no Indigenous peoples in Foxborough, and that's a battle for another day, because we know we have at least three. You've already heard from two of them, Dave Smith and Kristen Poole Farmer, both of whom fully support the use of the mascot. The third person didn't get back to us, maybe because he's moved away, I'm not sure. So, we're here again tonight, on behalf of several people here, just to request that you take no further action until additional information can be gathered for the reasons stated above, and until you can fully assess the citizens' desires and act as a representative body for the members of the community as is part of your dual responsibility outlined in your own policy manual. And then we would ask that you please defer this matter to the town, decide to decide as a whole if we choose to. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Harding. And up we have Doug Seuss. Seuss, hello.
Doug Seuss, 235 Central Street, Foxborough, Mass. I'm not going to take a lot of time. I watched the last meeting from home on TV. A lot of good points, mostly for maintaining what we have, you know, a couple against. All due respect, you know, to everybody involved. My first point would be is, I think we're all in agreement that the Warrior name is still okay. It's the image, okay? I think part of the problem is, is that the image, because it was tied to a team called the Redskins, that association stands out in people's minds, all right? If they were the Washington Warriors, they would probably still be the Redskins.
Been one, so I have my mothers, and my mother was an only child. So I also have my grandmothers. And like, and it's on that gold line that became his first girlfriend.
No, I know. Yeah, mine too. It's the Lennox of the Golds.
Mm-hmm. What we'll be thinking.
Yep. All right, everybody, welcome. Hello?
Hi.
Hi. So, welcome to the April 4th, 2023 Regular Meeting of Foxborough School Committee. We'll call it "To Order." And first, we always start by saying, this meeting is being recorded. Thanks to our friends at AFCA, Foxborough Cable Access. And these meetings are available online for the foreseeable future, which I think means forever and ever and ever. So, welcome, everybody. We're going to start with open public comment. And seeing that we have about, yep, 10 folks, nine to 10 folks, who are ready to come on up and talk, we'll do that. I'll call it in order. If, and this is similar to what I said last meeting, if you see in the crowd here that there are folks that you actually want to sit with and speak with, feel free to pass until they come up or call them up with you. Because the, I think the greatest benefit is for us hearing a range of ideas and a range of comments. If they happen to be 10 folks in here who all believe the same thing, come on up at the same time. And we'll acknowledge all of you. When you do come up, all we ask is that you speak your name into the mic, mostly, and that's, we can all hear you in the room, but it's for folks who are watching online and for the quality of the recording. Because as many of us know, people do log in and look at the meetings that have happened in the past. So it's just good to be recognized. So, I think that's everything. And I will remind the adults in the room that we want to keep our comments to three minutes. The reason I say adults is we've never had somebody who's a student actually go over. And the only people who've ever, ever gone over are adults. It's just, I think, I know, what we're used to. Anyway, with that, and, and folks, just be bold about deferring to somebody else or whatnot. I have Heather Harding. Make sure that's, mic is hot, Ms. Harding.
Barkin, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Good, yeah, we're good. Thank you.
Awesome. Heather Harding, 14 North High Street. So, I can see how there could have been confusion, given what's transpired in the recent years with respect to our mascot. Some things have an F, some have an FHS, some have an F with feathers, some have our mascot. And I think A.J. did a really good job at the last meeting of clearing up and explaining to the group that, you know, it wasn't the coaches, the students, the parents, or any local Indigenous peoples who wanted the logo removed. So I was glad that, you know, that, that issue was put to rest. But this issue in general has the potential to really divide our town and to take one more thing away from our kids who've already endured more than they should have over the last three years with COVID. Not to mention the costs involved. I'm, I'm sure you guys all at least watched the CIP presentation, and you know that the schools put in a CIP request for $90,000 to purchase some music equipment and some copiers. And that request wasn't able to be filled due to lack of funding. Half of the request was deferred until the funds could be available. So, I just thought maybe instead of, you know, potentially spending money on this, perhaps you guys could focus on fulfilling that request for the new musical equipment and copiers, instead of making the kids wait till the next budget cycle. I mean, some of them are going to graduate, and it's a long time for them to wait. If we could find the money and maybe spend it on that instead of this. At the last meeting, the question was raised as to whether or not we have other things in town that pay respect to Indigenous peoples. And our town does, in fact, have a history of showing tribute to the Native Americans in multiple ways. Many of our streets, bodies of water, recreational areas, take their names from Native American culture. Coacsett Street, Coacsett Lake, Coacsett River Recreational Area, meaning place of towering pines. Nipponset Street, Nipponset Height Ave, Nipponset Reservoir, meaning spreading water. Lake Miramshi and Miramshi Road, meaning laughing water. The first settlers' roads and boundary marker on South Street is a tribute to an old Indian trail that runs from Dedham to Bristol. Our memorial hall has an amazing Native American exhibit. We have local businesses that sell Native American items. The Schneider Learning Center has a whole section that speaks to Native American flora and fauna. Foxborough's steeped in a history of paying tribute to our Indigenous people. The sense it says we have no Indigenous peoples in Foxborough, and that's a battle for another day, because we know we have at least three. You've already heard from two of them, Dave Smith and Kristen Poole-Farmer, both of whom fully support the use of the mascot. The third person didn't get back to us, maybe because he's moved away, I'm not sure. So, we here again tonight, on behalf of several people here, just to request that you take no further action until additional information can be gathered, for the reasons stated above, and until you can fully assess the citizens' desires and act as a representative body for the members of the community, as is part of your dual responsibility outlined in your own policy manual. And then we would ask that you please defer this matter to the town, decide, to decide as a whole, if we choose to. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Harding. And up we have Doug Seuss. Seuss, hello.
Doug Seuss, 235 Central Street, Foxborough, Mass. I'm not going to take a lot of time. I watched the last meeting from home on TV. Lot of good points, mostly for maintaining what we have, you know, a couple against. All due respect, you know, to everybody involved. My first point would be is, I think we're all in agreement that the Warrior name is still okay. It's the image, okay? I think part of the problem is, is that the image, because it was tied to a team called the Redskins, that association stands out in people's minds, all right? If they were the Washington Warriors, they would probably still be the Washington Warriors. They'd probably still be wearing that logo on their helmet. I just think we fall victim to the fact that the Redskins is a derogatory name, all right? And we have a shared logo. Ours is slightly different, but in essence, it's the same thing. So I just, I wanted to clear that up, and I think we should move away from that. My second point is, is that a Native American person came into my wife's place of employment yesterday. And my wife blatantly asked her, well, not blatantly asked her, just came out and said, "Can I ask you a question about this? Does this offend you?" And the woman said, "No, it does not." She goes, "Because if we start wiping out all this stuff, people will soon forget about our people." All right? So if it's done respectfully, and you're not the Cleveland Indians logo, this is a caricature, all right? People can be proud of that, whether they're Native American or not. My third point would be, the newspapers are quick to jump on it. Media, they're beautiful, all right? It's about time Foxborough did this. It's about time Foxborough did that. Get rid of it. The people writing that do not live in Foxborough. What do they care? I don't value their opinions, all right? I buy their newspaper. It's crazy enough that I spend the money to buy their newspaper. I don't have to listen to that. They have no bearing on what we do or our life here. And then my last point would be, as an employee of the Foxborough school system, all right? I enjoy my job, but there are a lot more important things that you people as a group need to focus on, instead of this. There are a lot of things that are good, there are some things that need some work. And those things should be our priority in not changing a logo. Thank you.
Thank you. Christine Igo Freeman.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you to the school committee for giving us this opportunity. So what I'd like to focus on tonight is some of the history, some of the Indigenous people history, and some of the history that involves the Warrior name, and some that involves the Warrior logo. Past few days, I've been going through a lot of yearbooks, town reports, and also old Foxborough reporters. One thing I came across was this almanac back from 1995, and there are articles in here from Foxborough's own town historian, Jack Othelot. This is the story, I'll just hold it up. I'm not going to read it to you, but I'm just going to highlight what I found most interesting about it. He does talk about the different tribes that were in this area, some from the Cape, some, you know, in Taunton. But what was most interesting is that there was a line that divided the Massachusetts Tribe and the Wampanoag Tribe. And that line, strangely enough, ran right through Foxborough. And there were two chiefs that came together back in 1670. They met in what we call South Foxborough today, at the home of a Mr. Hudson. And Mr. Hudson was considered one of the first settlers in what would become Foxborough. He was one of the first settlers to befriend the Indians, and so the two chiefs met at his home and to discuss and verify the boundary lines. And once again, that was in 1670. Unfortunately, they could not come to a peaceful agreement, and in 1672, the two tribes went to war, and that's what we know now as King Philip's War. So that started in 1672 and went on for seven years. So, it's interesting that Foxborough did have this boundary line. I thought that was something new that I did not know about. And as Heather mentioned, the town is rich with different references and different Indigenous people names. So we do pay tribute to the Indigenous people who once this was their home. The next part of history is the Warrior name. So after going through many town reports and yearbooks and Foxborough reporters, I did come across the Foxborough reporter from November 25th, 1954. It was the week leading up to the infamous Mansfield-Foxborough Thanksgiving Game. The Mansfield team is called the Mansfield Hornets, and at that time, it was called the Foxborough High School Football Squad. And that was their name back then. That was 1954. Well, what was interesting, in 1954, there came about what was called an Athletic Council. And that was in 1954. And in doing a little research, I came across this article. Basically, the Athletic Council, their role was this. This is right from the Foxborough reporter. "The school committee appointed the proposal for the Foxborough High School Athletic Advisory Council. The purpose of this group shall be to act in an advisory capacity in all interscholastic athletic activities and to make recommendations to the school committee. The members of the council shall be the superintendent of schools, the principal of the high school, the athletic director, high school finance, head coaches, two senior pupils, one boy, one girl, one school committee member, and one community, one citizen from the town." And after that council came into being, one, exactly one year later, now we're to Thanksgiving, leading up to the Thanksgiving Game, Thursday, November 24th, 1955, we have a picture of the Mansfield Hornets and a picture of the Foxborough Warriors. I'm not sure if this was the first reference, but it was the first reference that I could find to the name calling our team the Warriors.
Thank you.
And Christine, we need to make sure that we get a copy
Sure.
of all the articles.
Yeah, definitely. And lastly, so the Warrior name came first, the Warrior logo has, you know, gone through transitions over the years, but I guess an ending, I'd just like to say, I'd like to keep it the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Erin Ernst. Welcome.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Erin Ernst, 12 Weston Ave. My husband Colin and I have been Foxborough residents and active members of the community for over 19 years. Both of our children have attended Foxborough schools from kindergarten all the way to grade 12. Our oldest graduated in the class of 2021, and our youngest will be graduating, actually two months from today, in the class of 2023. During her junior year at Foxborough High School, my oldest child completed an extensive research project for her AP language course, where she was asked to research the impact of one thing in the Foxborough community that she would like to change. She chose to research the Foxborough mascot. She chose to research the mascot because she had recently attended a music camp in another state, and a student had asked her why she had a racist image on her cellphone wallet, and her eyes were open to the negative impact of the Foxborough Public School mascot. A few weeks ago, I emailed the school committee copies of her research project, which included an interview with a member of the Mashpee-Wampanoag Tribe, who confirmed that both the mascot image and the use of the letter F with eagle feathers hanging off of it were offensive to them. My daughter also met with Dr. Burdos and Dr. Mello to discuss her findings, and was invited to find, to share her research findings more widely with the Foxborough School Committee back in the spring of 2020. But unfortunately, those plans were impacted by the pandemic. One of the pieces of her research that stood out to me was from the American Psychological Association, which is the largest scientific and professional organization of psychologists in the United States. They conducted extensive research, finding that, quote, "American Indian mascots are harmful, not only because they are often negative, but also because they remind American Indians of the limited ways in which others see them. This in turn restricts the number of ways American Indians can see themselves," end of quote. The current Foxborough mascot is one-dimensional. It does not reflect the historical reality that not all Indigenous people were warriors, and many were only warriors because the white settlers forced them to be. The mascot ignores the diversity of the group and distills them down to one dimension, an angry people at war. Why would the Foxborough Public Schools continue to choose to have a mascot that has proven to have harmful impact on others? The Foxborough mascot has a negative effect on the mental health of some of our students, as well as those visiting our schools and playing against our sports teams. Our town needs to prioritize students' mental health over tradition. In closing, I invite the school committee to consider a quote from Maya Angelou, to guide your discussion on this very important topic. The quote is, "Do the best you can until you know better. Then, when you know better, do better. You now know better, and it's time to do better, for the benefit of all members of the Foxborough Public School community." Thank you.
Thank you. Denise Hugh. That's fine. Maury Freeman.
Thank you. I'm Maury Freeman. First of all, not all of us agree that the name is okay. I sure don't. And bear with me, I've dropped some eyes, so everything's blurry to me today. Okay, so I'm going to hold it close to my face.
Okay.
While considering the change of a name and the symbol for the school is difficult, it also presents us an opportunity to consider how we teach our kids values, sportsmanship, and empathy, especially in today's world. The current name and symbol belong to the Indigenous people of our country and our town, not to the rest of us, as professional sports are acknowledging and making changes as well. Here's another way to look at Warriors. Warriors battle the enemy in order to subdue them. Warrior is a valid name for the brave men and women in the military. Their life is often on the line as to protect our nation and its people and defend the Constitution. They are our defenders in the violent world, unfortunately, our kids are growing up in. Our student athletes are expected to respect their opponents, practice good sportsmanship, enjoy their success, and learn from their failures. Learn to become good citizens, bringing pride and honor to themselves, their school, and our community. They should play the game hard, they should play the game to win, but not have the frame of mind of a warrior to win at any cost to themselves or their opponents. That's not what sports is about, on this level. We want our kids to benefit from the many lessons, challenges, and competition that participation in sports can bring. We also want our kids to respect all people, no matter how different, and discourage them from developing stereotypes that can grow out of not understanding a culture and associating people with a picture or a word that also brings forth pictures of a person who might have violence. Changing the name and symbol would bring pride, uniting the players and student body to defend the honor of the school and the community, and helping, I think, all of our kids grow up. Thank you.
Thank you. Denise Hugh, welcome.
Good evening, school committee and neighbors. My name is Denise Hugh. I live at 6 Lincoln Hill Way. I was not born in Foxborough, I was not raised in Foxborough. So I understand that I don't have the sentimental attachment that comes with the childhood here. I moved to Foxborough in 2015, when my boys, Kayden and Kai, were eight and nine. I moved here not because of a logo. I did not move here for the Warrior name. I moved here because of the school system, I moved here because of the music program, and I moved here for the community. And I, like all of you in this room, made the decision to stay in Foxborough. And that's a decision we make every day. And I have made that decision because the schools have enabled my children to thrive. They had, the music, the music program has exceeded my expectations, and it has given my son belonging. And I have found a community that supports me. And I was reminded of all of this last week, as I was walking through Foxborough High School for World Language and Culture Night. And I was reminded of how much I have loved to watch the changing face of Foxborough in these last eight years. So no, I did not grow up a Warrior. I grew up a Tanner. There's a few of us out there. But I'm a Warrior now, and my boys, Kayden and Kai, they're also Warriors. And I attend Friday night football games with pride, even though it's mainly for the Foxborough marching, Warrior marching band, admittedly. And I watch my soccer, my son's town soccer team play with pride. And those kids, they play hard. They put their hearts out on that field, even though their jerseys don't bear the image of the Warrior. And this pride, it extends beyond any image in a logo, and it will remain regardless of this outcome. And, and so I understand, thanks, Brent. So I understand the value in continuity. So I do ask that the school committee consider keeping the Warrior name. But I also ask that all of you in this room tonight and watching virtually, to think about what Warrior means to you. To me, it means courage and bravery and compassion in the face of adversity. Warrior spirit goes beyond any image in a logo. We can agree on that. The Warrior spirit, it's embodied in the people in this room tonight and two weeks ago, who, who regardless of what side you fall on, felt so passionate about a topic that you came to speak up. The Warrior spirit is embodied in Caleb Palmer, who spoke up here at the last school committee meeting. She's a senior in high school, and she was the lone dissenter in a room full of her peers with parents of her peers. The Warrior spirit is embodied in the school committee members, who are tackling this extremely controversial topic that they knew would be met with backlash and opposition. Changing an image on a logo doesn't take any of that away from us. It will not diminish or degrade our way of life. The history, the history that led up to this will not be erased. The Warrior spirit will persist regardless of what side you stand on, and regardless of what image we have in our logo. And I thank you.
Thank you. Emma Lacy.
Good evening. My name is Emma Lacy of 22 Independence Drive, and I'm a senior in high school, a senior at Foxborough High School. Tonight, I am actually speaking on behalf of Maura Bugleone from 54 Adams Street. She was going to speak tonight, but unfortunately, her two-year-old got sick, so she could not be in attendance. So I'll be reading a speech she prepared. Please know that I support everything that she has written here, and I also have copies to, I believe, provide to you. If anyone's interested, she does have her sources cited here, so if you're interested in where she got any of these facts, feel free to take a look at this handout. Maura says, "I have lived in Foxborough for 14 years. I have three daughters approaching the ages of three, eight, and 11. I feel a great deal of pride in the town of Foxborough, and on many occasions, have been impressed by how the Foxborough community has come together to support one another. I am proud to be a Foxborough resident, community member, coach, and mom. I also feel strongly that it is time to retire our current school logo that is of a stereotype of an American Indian. A couple of weeks ago, community members shared their thoughts, feelings, and opinions about how our logo honors, or rather, is intended to honor, Native Americans. While I understand the sentiment, I believe there is a lack of historical context that is a missing critical component here. I believe that if more community members were aware of how hard tribal leaders in Massachusetts have fought to see the end of these mascots and logos, they would feel differently. These tribes do not view these mascots as a sign of respect and have clearly lobbied for their update for many years. I'm going to share some quotes from publicly available letters from the leadership of Massachusetts tribes, which summarize their publicly available statements about Native American mascots. A letter from the Mashpee-Wampanoag Tribe calls for a prohibition on all Native American sport team mascots, nicknames, and logos in Massachusetts public schools, and supports legislation which would accomplish this goal, while ensuring for the incorporation of a regular curriculum segment devoted to Indigenous culture and the effects of colonization. Please note this statement doesn't say racist or offensive mascots, nicknames, or logos. It says "all." An excerpt from a letter written by a Massachusetts tribe at Ponkapoag. "Hundreds of Native American and academic organizations have issued statements supporting the elimination of Native American nicknames and logos, including the American Psychological Association, American Sociological Association, the Massachusetts Teachers Association, the National Indian Education Association, the Massachusetts Commission on Indian Affairs, the Native American Journalists Association, the Native American Rights Fund, and the National Congress of American Indians, which is the oldest, largest, and most representative intertribal organization representing over 250 Native tribes and nations. State law to address the problem of these mascots, nicknames, and logos is both necessary and overdue. Despite repeated calls from Native communities, non-Native allies, and numerous professional organizations to eliminate the Native American nicknames and logos used by their schools, many communities..." many communities maintain them while insisting that no harm is done and no disrespect is meant. The Massachusetts tribe at Ponca Poag urges you to act on the research regarding the actual harm that is generated by Native American mascots and to listen to our and the many diverse voices calling for the prohibition of all Native American sport team mascots, nicknames, and logos in Massachusetts public schools. This change will result in a more positive educational experience for all children and youth within the Commonwealth." Here is another quote and statement by Melissa Harding Ferretti, chairwoman of the Herring Pond Wampanoag Tribe. "As a Herring Pond Wampanoag mother and grandmother, who was raised by an elder of my tribe and has lived in Plymouth and surrounding towns all my life, we know well that there is little knowledge of the actual history and contemporary existence of tribal communities in this region. I know about the racism faced by my ancestors, my tribal community, members of my family, and myself. The fact that racist ideas about Native peoples in Massachusetts are deeply ingrained and are reflected in sports teams mascots should not have to be explained in the 2020s, especially since Native activists and educators have worked so hard for so long to educate other Americans about this. But here we are again today, working to educate Euro-Americans and government officials about the blatant and destructive racism of such images in sports teams mascots. My hope is that the Massachusetts legislature will listen and learn, and will finally do what is right and just. Native peoples throughout the U.S. have fought for decades to bring an end to Indian mascots. First and foremost, such symbols and imagery are deeply offensive, racist, and harmful to the well-being of indigenous peoples, and especially to our Native youth. They are also directly linked to colonialism and its justifications of violence and racism directed specifically at indigenous peoples." End quote. "The tribes have spoken. It's time for us to do the right thing. We need to remember that while traditions and rituals are meaningful to us, these sentiments should not supersede doing what is right. The active legislation in Massachusetts to prohibit Native American mascots and logos, which has been the backing, which has been the backing of the largest tribe in Massachusetts along with six other tribes, is being supported for the fourth consecutive legislative session. So, we can wait until we are forced to make this change, and in my opinion, look stubborn and frankly disrespectful, or we can be proactive and work together to find a symbol to represent our future. It's time to come together once again as a part of the community we all know and love. It is time to listen, be humble, and respect the wishes of the local tribes. Thank you."
Thank you. Yes, thank you so much. Thank you. Appreciate it. AJ Dooley. Welcome, Mr. Dooley.
AJ Dooley, 75 Ridge Road. Please do not stop my clock yet, because first off, I'd like to start off with something important. I'd like to thank Mike Grace from the Foxborough Police Department and the job that they did last Tuesday when there was a call into our schools that there was an active shooter. And I'd like to just talk about the important things right now, so let's give him a round of applause.
So Ms. Chief Grace's attendance here is not an accident. He's on the agenda later.
Yep, of course. But I just wanted to talk about something a little bit more important before we talked about something that, you know, the real things.
Go ahead.
All right, so I understand, you know, what people are saying about the indigenous people and, you know, that it, that it might affect them, you know, in a bad way. But there is just so many more things that we could be focused on here in town to make this place a better place and to bring us together. This is really gonna be a divide and a separation in town. I can see it happening, and I just really don't think that when the voters in Foxborough, which, let's be honest, not many people go out and vote, okay? So like, you guys stand before us, you guys won, God bless you, but we really don't have many people voting in town. And I don't think that anyone went up there to vote to say, to have five people, four of which did not, have not been here, you know, their whole adult lives, they moved here or whatnot. So the more I sit here, and I respect the people who go in either way, I really, really do, but I just don't think that this is a five-person matter. I think that this should go to a town vote, and I feel like there should just be more of attention from you guys on school committee things, on school committee things. This runs much deeper than, than just voting on, on a logo. And by, and I'm losing my train of thought because, you know, there are, there's a lot of people that would like to come here, but there's so many, they have, they have so many other things going on. Everyone says, "Oh, I'd go, but I have this. Oh, I go, but I get this." And there's a lot of people, and I think that the, everyone will be able to really speak how they feel with a town vote. And I'm not even sure that even we'd lose if there was a regular vote between the five of you. I'm not sure, but I think that the right thing to do is to put it on a town vote, and I think it's a lot of pressure to put on you five people for you guys to make this decision for the whole entire town. And I don't wanna just start rambling on, but it's just a much big, it's, it's a much bigger issue. Some people don't think it's a big issue, or they, but to a lot of people, it is a big issue. And, you know, I'm shaking right now because it's such a big issue, and I, and you know what? I'm up here shaking for so many people that aren't here. I'm up here shaking for people that taught me things in town and people who, who believe and believe blue and gold. And I just think it's a lot of pressure on you five, and I think that the right thing to do is to go to a town vote and, and it is just way more than just a logo. And it is a way of life. And I do believe that if it does go to a town vote, that you will see an outpouring of people in this town that are, that are willing to, to realize that how important this is and come out and actually, and vote. And whereas coming up here on a Tuesday night at seven o'clock is tough for people. So there's just many people that haven't got a chance to voice their opinions, and that's where I'm at. And, and I truly do respect both sides of this. And I just hope that you five don't put this, all this pressure on yourselves, because it's gonna be a divide. It really, really is. And it's just a lot of pressure, and hopefully you guys do the right thing and let the town speak and not just five people, because we didn't vote on, on you guys to make such a big decision. And we voted on you guys to help educate, teach our children, look out for the safety of our children, you know? There is so much vaping going on in the schools, at the high school and at the Ahern, and, and we should be talking about how lucky we are that, that there's not a lot of drugs in our towns, that there's not a lot of fentanyl. What are we gonna do to prevent that? Because all it's gonna take is one thing to happen, and then everyone's gonna say, "Oh, maybe we should have been focused on that." And, and I'm just rambling on, but.
Thanks, AJ. Thanks, AJ.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, AJ. And Joe Garrity.
Me?
Yeah, you're up, Joe. Welcome.
Can I get on the list?
What's that?
Can I get on the list?
Uh, yeah.
Me too.
Thank you.
Good evening, Foxborough School Committee, Administration, and Community Members. Joe Garrity, former student of Foxborough School System and a active supporter of the Foxborough community. If there was ever a need to change the logo and name in this town, well, I'm just trying to speak into the microphone.
You're fine. We hear you. They're, they're saying we hear you, Joe.
If there was ever a need to change the logo and name for Foxborough, it should be the Foxborough Patriots, because we live in the same town that our NFL team, the New England Patriots, play in, and we have a Patriots owner that supports our local Foxborough YMCA in the Foxborough Public Schools.
Thank you.
Steve Uden.
Me?
Yes.
Thank you.
The part you missed at the beginning is we're gonna try to keep you to three minutes of time.
Two minutes, a little less.
Oh, boy. It's on.
Good evening.
Welcome.
I'll be brief. I have nothing prepared. Respect everybody here behind the desk and everybody here in the room, especially some of the very poignant and well-researched opinions that frankly, I don't agree with right now, but it's hard to contest certain facts. But I respect everybody here and hope I'm continued to get invited to cookouts here and there. I have bad news for you. Not since 2012, in the, if you will, scuttlebutt and whispers of the town, have I heard of a board that's lost such trust from its community than this board and its lack of transparency on its motivation to change this. That's it. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. Patricia Slattery.
Okay. Patricia Slattery, 63 Moore Street. Grew up here my whole life, went to Foxborough High, met my husband, my kids went through the schools, so.
There you go.
Okay. A Warrior, courage, honor, loyalty, integrity, and selflessness. Bravery to face the world with the real you shining through, having the guts to stand up for what you believe in, and possessing the inner power to be able to fail and try again, but most importantly, succeed. When I think of Foxborough Warriors, I think of a town that rallies around their community in times of triumph, crisis, and tragedy. I think of hundreds of people walking down Route One in a snowstorm to support my 18-month-old nephew who is diagnosed with brain cancer and attended a fundraiser. I think of hundreds, I mean hundreds of people showing their support when Joe Heinricha and Christian Warriors passed away suddenly. I think of a town who celebrates state championships, girls' basketball, and cheer teams. The Warriors and its logo are the face of this town. It's what people think about when they say Foxborough. It's always the home of the Warriors. When the poll was discussed last meeting and Heather was questioned about the population of Foxborough, we understood why this was asked. However, this doesn't affect all 17,000 people in this town. Quite frankly, it doesn't affect even close to that. There are people of all ages who this affects. The new elementary school kid who is playing lacrosse for the first time, the father who is coaching his daughter in travel basketball, the grandparent whose kids, grandkids, and great-grandkids played and are playing for this town. But there are countless other people of all ages, middle-aged couples who children aren't interested in sports, couples with no children, and 75-year-old elderly people who watch daily masks and reruns of Golden Girls, who aren't concerned about the logo that represents the schools and athletes of this town. You see, that's just it. It's that tight-knit population that it affects. It's the athletes and the school they are so proud to be playing for. They take extreme pride in being the Warriors, suiting up every day with a logo that signifies who they are and who they play for. It is why they get out there each day and give it their last ounce of hard work that they have inside of them. It's the pride in being a Warrior that makes them want to wear that blue and gold. Imagine being in a nationality that feels almost gone, erased, if you will, and this is all they have left that allows them to feel like their heritage is still alive. Most of us won't ever know what that feels like, yet all they have to do is hold on to this logo and its name. How sad for them and how easy for us to want to look the other way. Let's not do away with something that we feel isn't a way of honoring and said, "Let's find a way to make it honorable." Like one wise person said last meeting, "There are more important issues to be worried about, like the mental health of our children and the need for special education and students to receive more. Let's keep our eye on the ball and our head in the game and understand that being a Warrior is a way of life in this town and should be left alone for one, for once. Let's be the leader instead of the constant follower. Let the Foxborough Warriors' blue and gold is all we will ever know, and let anything else than that will only make us feel as though we were misrepresented."
Thank you. Thank you. Um, thank you. Thank you very much, everybody, for coming out again. Is someone else? Oh, sorry, did I miss somebody?
Another speaker in the studio. Speaker.
I'm sorry?
Another speaker.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Thank you.
He wasn't on the list.
You were, because I talked to you. I just didn't write down your name, because I'm foolish. What's your name, sir?
My name is Shreya. I'm a sophomore in high school.
Okay.
I wasn't planning on speaking. This is kind of improvised here. All right, one of the common arguments to changing the logo has been that there's been more important things to do. Well, there's always gonna be more important things to do. The $90,000 bill that was, like, denied, should the school committee just stop making decisions in total until that's done with? The decision should keep happening, right? We can't just stop all of, we can't just stop everything because there's more important things to do. Also, someone said this would create a divide in town. Well, I'm like looking here, and there's already a divide in town, whether the logo's there or not. So is it better to do something about it or just sit here and live with it? Someone else said this takes away from Foxborough history. As it's already been stated, there's a lot of, like, history of Native Americans in Foxborough. I don't think taking away a single two-dimensional logo would remove, would change that. And are we really trying to use respect to justify the logo? Like, this logo was not made by an Indian, right? And just because we respect them, does that give us the right to use the, like, a Warrior, a Native American Warrior? It's already been proven that this is unpopular among Native Americans, and if we really respected them, then the logo would be changed.
Oh, that's it. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for everybody who was able to come and upend your lives to do it. It's important. As Mr. Dooley had stated, it's not easy, so we're, I'm grateful that you all came and did that. A reminder that the meeting is recorded, obviously. If you, if you did have written notes, would you please either give them to one of us so we can put it in the, in the record, or get it to us electronically? The reason for that is it's, it's literally part of the public record. So if you search, "Hey, can I get the statements that were made at, at a school committee meeting", that should be information that you all should be able to ac, all of us should be able to access, regardless of who's on the committee and when it happens. So, thank you for that, everybody. Yeah. Next up, something far more boring. Approval of minutes from the March 25th, 2023, 21st, because that's the date it happened, 2023 meeting. Do any committee members have comments, questions, concerns, additions, or anything that they needed changed on those minutes?
I do not. I would move to accept the minutes from March 21st.
I'd like to second.
All those in favor? Those minutes are approved and for posting and release, again, all part of the public record. And thank you again to Ms. Grace, because those meeting minutes are extensive. Next up on the agendas, superintendent, superintendent update, and we're pairing that with a school safety update in light of this past week's events. Dr. Berdows?
I'd like to ask Chief Grace to come up to the front table and appreciate very much the recognition of our public safety partners from Mr. Dooley earlier. We experienced last week part of the swatting calls, that's part of a national trend that's been taking place across the country, actually, and the purpose of those phone calls is to disrupt the school day with threats of violence, creating an interruption that is one that's going to tie up local police and public safety resources.
Sorry.
And they are able to accomplish that goal when they disrupt all of the school districts around. We had about 28 communities that had received those swatting calls last week when we had received it early with the threat of an active shooter. Within two minutes, we had our public safety partners in our schools, and not just at the high school, at all five of our schools. We've talked about, safety is our number-one priority here in Foxborough. We need to have a safe learning environment for our students and our staff to be able to learn and grow together. And we are very fortunate with the partnership that we have with police and fire and public safety as a whole. We work very closely with our school resource officers on a daily basis and with the rest of the force on a, on a regular, ongoing dialogue that we take place in, planning and processing when we have just even drills that are typical, you know, fire drills or evacuation drills that we have in the fall. And when we had that threat last week, our teachers and staff went into action very quickly with what they had been trained to do. And it is scary, and it is a situation that none of us want to be in, but the sentiment afterwards were people felt that they were prepared, even though you feel as though you can't ever be prepared for something like that. But based on the training and the support that we have, they did feel that way, and we heard that from, from faculty, from staff, from students, and, and I heard it from parents as well. Again, none of us ever want to be put in that position. But to have the situation that we did where we went into a full lockdown, teachers and staff, they did, they barricaded doors, they did what they needed to do, what they had been trained to do. This is something that is a change for us when we had all our faculty and staff last fall go through. when we have just even drills that are typical, you know, fire drills or evacuation drills that we have in the fall. And when we had that threat last week, our teachers and staff went into action very quickly with what they had been trained to do. And it is scary, and it is a situation that none of us want to be in, but the sentiment afterwards were people felt that they were prepared, even though you feel as though you can't ever be prepared for something like that. But based on the training and the support that we have, they did feel that way. And we heard that from, from faculty, from staff, from students, and, and I heard it from parents as well. Again, none of us ever want to be put in that position. But to have the situation that we did where we went into a full lockdown, teachers and staff, they did, they barricaded doors, they did what they needed to do, what they had been trained to do. This is something that is a change for us when we had all our faculty and staff last fall go through that training. It is training the adults who care for the children. And that is why the children are not trained in that, but they listen to their caregivers and in this case, it's the faculty and staff in our schools. So our practices and our preparation, it showed, it showed last week. We are eternally grateful for all of our faculty and staff and our students and what they did and our public safety partners. One of the reasons Chief Grace is here tonight is to be able to answer any other questions that maybe have come to you, but I want to just also bring up that whenever we're preparing for these things, it's hard. We learn from it every single time and just as we, we learned last week. But I also want to make a comment, and some of you sitting here tonight were part of this. Our community came together and they brought breakfast in for our faculty and staff at the high school, understanding that it is a traumatic experience for faculty and staff to, and recognize them. And they were so appreciative of the community support and what was done. They, they were so surprised by the spreads of food with, you know, bagels and muffins and coffee and just recognizing what they, what they do. So on behalf of the Foxborough Public Schools and the high school in particular, I want to say thank you to our community who really rallied together to do that. I will turn it over to Chief Grace so he can talk a little bit more from his vantage point of last week as well.
So as you see, I have a notebook here. One thing, if I ever sit in front of the school committee, make sure I do my homework, right? I, two years ago, when we came out of COVID, the SRO program with the Foxborough Police Department, before we saw the uptick of calls for service and ease within, out with our kids, was redesigned forecasting challenges. Well, I would like to say, partnered with Dr. Berdows and her team and with your support and the town's support and parents, et cetera, throughout the whole community, currently we run four full-time SROs in the town of Foxborough with a direct supervisor. And many of the things, and I'll tell you, last Tuesday is just, you know, unfortunately, it's just an unfortunate thing our children went through. It really is. I wish we could avoid it, we wish it didn't happen, but we can't wish those items away. What we have to do is have a plan, and we plan and plan and plan. And last Tuesday was an execution of partnership between the school department and law enforcement and Foxborough Fire. And of course, I, you know, we're talking prior to this about the symbol and we talk about what it means to us, and, and I'm not going to get into the dynamics of that, but the one word that I do see is about being all on the same team and being a team and how a team works and how a team succeeds. And as a community, we succeeded that day. Last year, on the presentation for public safety, there were three goals, there were five goals, but three of them specifically that I addressed with you. And one of them was to foster a safe environment for our kids, to promote strong partnerships, and develop school initiatives like school violence and emergency management plans. Well, I can tell you on Tuesday, all those were in place. And as a daughter, I mean, as a dad who had a daughter who was locked in the gym with no phone, who I talked to after school, she said it was scary. But the one word that I have really found was called empowerment. What we saw was empowerment for teachers to not just be stuck in the moment, but they were empowered to make a difference. All we ask our teachers and we ask our kids is give us two minutes. That's all we ask. Give us two minutes. And the plans that we have in place, and I'm not going to get into all of those, and the communication that we have on a daily basis, they're there. And I want, you know, kids sitting at home and I want parents sitting at home to know that those plans exist. Something like this happens, there's, it's, it's in place. We're not reinventing the wheel in the moment or on the fly. Nothing's going to be perfect. There'll be after actions. We'll learn from it. We'll find out where there were breakdowns. We understand that, but we learned from it, we grew from it, and it's just a big compliment to everybody in this town and how that unfolded. And I do want to talk about, one thing is, these phone calls that come in, they're not like a, a recorded phone call. These are live callers. These are live callers interacting with the call taker, giving additional information, additional threats, and they just don't hang up. So though it comes in as a swatting call, they, they vary from all over the country and all different types. I believe the next day Pittsburgh got inundated with robo-calls of swatting. Those were a little different. So I just want to, just in, you know, kind of bring to people's attention that, you know, it is a little more dynamic than just, you know, a phone call. I'm open to any question, but I do want to add one thing that I think parents should know, that in a critical incident at a school, your kids are going to talk to you faster than myself or Dr. Berdows can ever release information.
Yeah.
Because they're in the moment. So I, I can't apologize that we don't have more information 30 seconds into an incident or maybe four minutes into it because it takes time to assess a threat, mitigate it, and then start to decompress and, and see where we're at. And that's what we're, we're doing. You know, these schools are big, they're large. It takes a significant amount of manpower to, to clear these buildings. So I just want parents to understand that we're going to get the information out to you, but I do want them to all know that we have resources, we have staff, and we have a plan in place to make sure that our kids are safe. And no questions are bad questions, so this is it.
Questions for follow-up from committee members? Ms. Ladani, please.
First of all, thank you.
And I just want to say, don't, you honestly, don't thank me, thank my offices.
Thank you.
The boots on the ground.
Thank you to everyone.
When the rubber hits the road, the, the offices out in their sectors, they're the first responders in the moment.
You said it yourself, teamwork.
It is.
Teamwork. Thank you to everybody, really. I was picking up my daughter and her friends, and I wanted to, I asked permission because they're 16 and you can't say thanks unless you get permission, but I was given permission to recount this. Her friend said, Ms. Sarah, it was scary, but I never felt unsafe. And I thought that was so powerful and such a compliment, and it made me so proud of this town. I mean, drills are great, but you don't know what people retain until you have an actual situation. So I, I just am blown away by the response time. I mean, even the kids were saying, they were there in two seconds. Like, they were just talking about the swift response, the teachers, their reactions. It was scary. It was a little traumatic, but it sounds like all the kids felt safe. So thank you to the teachers, thank you to the administration. I didn't hear from my daughter. Somebody else, somebody, you know, got back to me, a friend's mom had texted me, so I had no idea. And by the time I talked to my daughter, everything was over and done with. Yeah, Mom, I'm, I'm fine. I mean, that's, that's amazing. Thank you so much. So just wanted to say thank you. And I did want to take a minute to put my Parks and Rec hat on and just, you know, it's on the agenda for Parks and Rec to review our emergency protocol. We have the boot camp coming up, so we just wanted to, while you were here, just let you know that that's something, I think this is, we're learning from this. Do you know what I mean? And, and we're going to, we'll review it as a board for Parks and Rec.
And our SROs will be available all summer to help you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
More from the committee?
Go ahead.
So I was, I was just going to ask, is there anything more, either from the school side or, or the law enforcement side, that we can do to help, I don't know, educates, the word is coming to mind, but help educate and give comfort to our community, comfort may, whatever it is, to better understand what we're doing, what it could look like, what, without detailed plans. I know we're not going to give, you know, specific protocols and moments and decisions, but is there anything more we can do to, to let the, that the public know that this is kind of what it's going to look like, this is what happened and what it's going to look like, so don't be surprised if you see this? And it's a very vague ask, I know, but I'm just trying to...
It is. I mean, I, we could probably, with Dr. Berdows, put together some what to expect. I mean, I, you know, in regards to communications and access to the school, but a lot of this, it's kind of common sense. I mean, I, I, no disrespect, but you have a critical incident, things are going to stop, we're going to control the scene, we're going to mitigate any danger immediately, and then we, we're going to start decompressing it and making sure that we build the communication, and then we get all of our kids home to where they need to go if we, if it escalates to that level. It's hard, it's hard to put the whole world on pause and be on the outside and not know what's going on. But there has to be a little bit of a trust that the, the people in charge to keep the kids safe are doing it. And, and, and any parent can come, and I'll talk with any parent, if they have a question at any time to go over what I can share.
Okay.
The door is always open.
And I would add to...
Please.
On our website, under the School Safety tab, which is right on the main page, there are a number of resources. One of them is an FAQ document that goes through and talks about kind of the, the what-ifs. And I think that's a helpful, when I've had parents reach out to me, I've then steered them back to say, see if this is helpful to you, and if not, you know, we'll continue the conversation. And I've, and I've heard good feedback that that has been helpful, explaining the drills that we have or what, what it means if we're in a shelter-in-place as compared to, you know, a lockdown, a sheltered-in-place. We had one at the Ahern last week. It's more of a, a medical response. We need to clear the hallways if we have public safety or the, you know, coming in EMTs, you know, different examples like that. One other thing that we did hear from a communication standpoint is that many people have downloaded the, the School Messenger app on their phone, so that way you get push notifications of those emails that go out. You might not be looking at your email during the day. A lot of times, I, I'm not getting to my email until, you know, late in the day or in the evening. So we really encourage people to download that app because it does a couple of different things. One, it's going to get you whatever emails that go out, excuse me, right away, and it will allow the push notifications. And I actually have queued up two quick videos, one's a one minute and one's less than two minutes, that just wanted to show so you can get an idea of what this is. But it also, too, all of the messages that come out from principals or myself or the Director of Student Services, it provides all of those communications in one place. I, I think back to COVID when so many communications were going out and some of the feedback was, there's so many, I can't keep up with them because of all my other emails that might be coming through. This does kind of house them in one place. So this first video is just going to show communication. My disclaimer here is, when it talks at the end and it says, teachers are using, we're using, teachers are using this, they use other communication methods. We're using this from administrative standpoint when we're pushing out this information.
Sure.
So we'll just watch this first one.
Every parent has different preferences when it comes to school communications. That's why we're giving you a new way to stay informed, using choices that work for you. It's called the School Messenger app, and it's a free and easy-to-use tool. It helps you stay up to date on what's happening at school. Begin today by going to schoolmessenger.com/start. Just click on Sign Up in the top right to create a new account. You can also download the School Messenger mobile app for your Apple or Android device. The School Messenger app, web or mobile, brings together communications from the school, district, board, even your child's teachers, so you can review all of your school communications in one convenient place. You can easily tell us your preferences for different kinds of messages and receive communications only through the channels that you choose, from voice to email and more. And there's much more that the app can do to help you engage with your school and community. So sign up or learn more about the School Messenger app today. It's free. Start at schoolmessenger.com/start.
So this next video, again, it's just under two minutes and it, and it might seem kind of long, but I think it's important to watch so parents can go back to it, to see how easy it is to sign up. But the important piece here that you'll hear is to use your email address that we have as far as emergency or school information.
Thank you for joining us today to learn how to set up the School Messenger app. The first step is to download the app from the App Store or Google Play Store. The app with the blue icon is intended for parents, students, and teachers, and can facilitate app-to-app communications between the staff and community. Tap Install to download the app. Tap Open to open the downloaded app. Tap Sign Up at the bottom of the screen. Type in your email address. It is essential to use the email address that the school has on file for you. If you want to use a different email, please contact the school and ask them to update your email in the student information system. Create a password that is at least six characters long and contains one uppercase letter, one lowercase letter, and one number. It's a good idea to click the Preview button and view your password when you sign up to make sure no errors were made during the signup process. Tap the appropriate country for location and then the Sign Up button. A confirmation email will be sent to the email you entered. Retrieve the email and tap the link to complete the validation process and log into your account with your new credentials. When you first log in, it will ask you if it is okay to contact you with the displayed information. Your School Messenger app will now receive calls, emails, texts, push notifications, and teacher-initiated messages. Thanks for watching and have a great day.
So again, the teachers are not using, they, they use different sources, but principals use School Messenger, myself, and, and these are ways to get it in one place and to get it instantly if you have those notifications turned on.
So can I just want to close my question? So the reason I asked the question is I was reflecting on what happens now and today and my own personal years of experience, right? So I've been through it all, too. I've had bomb threats in the 90s. I was in the Foxborough High School on 9/11, so I've seen all these things. So the reason I was asking the question to what to expect is the world has changed, even for me, and I've been in education for 30 years, I've been out of the building for 10. So that was why I was asking it, because I wanted mentally to prepare myself for what I know from the past or my experience to what is now. And so that's where my, my head was coming, because there's probably a whole bunch of parents in the community that might have an expectation of what a crisis looks like or what students should do. And so I was just, it, it's more about, and you guys have answered a lot of questions, it's more about us as parents being aware so that we can understand what it may look like or may be like in 2023. That's where my head was, if that's where I was coming from.
Yeah, and I think everybody feels that way.
Changing, changing mindset, because that's where I was thinking, so.
Yeah. I mean, I would like to say that we're not going to get another one of these calls, but we could. Our department, we actually were having a strategic planning department, and then we were processing everything that happened, and then we kind of get ready for the next day because we don't know if, you know, we were on that alphabetical list that day and we, we could be at this again tomorrow, so how do we do it better? How do we lessen the, you know, decrease the impact on our kids?
Yeah.
And how do we get back to normal life as quickly as possible?
Yep. Thank you.
My only question, and then, and I'll, because just directly from what Mr. Pearson said, is I know from, just from many very informative meetings with you and your team that, you know, chiefs are in contact with each other. We don't work in isolation, and we're, you're in contact with state, you're in contact with the FBI, and all of these layers of safety that we have. Is there any things coming out from the national level in terms of this, the, the swatting phenomenon that you, you, you've been able to hear from, I guess, on a national or state level law enforcement?
So there is, so we obviously work very closely with the Fusion Center...
You do?
...because of our Homeland Security connections, and obviously the FBI is jumping on some of this. But those, and a lot of those phone numbers that are utilized, they're not real phone numbers.
Yeah.
You know, they're all internet-based, so it's a matter of stopping them immediately. So a lot of things have been done at the state level that law enforcement throughout the whole Commonwealth is talking. So if Western Mass were to receive a, a swatting call and we can identify the number, as soon as the second one is reported through the Fusion Center, we can stop it.
Mm-hmm.
So the Fusion Center has worked with and been able to kind of bypass and get the legal authority with the, with the cell phone holders to stop that right away. That's not to say that now they won't have four or five numbers. So, you know, it's, it's, it's always, it's always a challenge, but they will, you know, look into the investigation on some of these as, as much as they can if they leave the country. You know, it, it gets very difficult.
Ms. Raymond?
Right. I would just say, kind of a...
Right, I would just say, kind of along those lines is, as these things develop and more information comes out, if there is something that your department needs, or the, you know, the school administration needs in order to help assist with that, please keep us abreast of that, because I think that that is something that we can all easily acknowledge that is needed, because the world's changing, and unfortunately, this seems to be something that is going to happen more often than we want.
And I do want to credit Dr. Burdos and Bill Utnar and Aaron, they are always, always thinking ahead. We do know, you know, action is faster than reaction, but we're always trying to say, okay, if this were to happen, where are we today? I mean, our emergency response system worked perfectly before, if we were to go back, we had people not utilizing our communication center. All of that was utilized through, when the calls came in, and, you know, we received more than one, and they were all centralized, the information was real-time. Our technology at the schools, and now a lot of this was brought down to the Police Department, was utilized within 10 seconds before the officers already got there to look for any behavioral changes that were occurring with the staff and the students, which could indicate that the situation was unfolding. So we are, I will talk to Dr. Burdos, and if we see things that we need, obviously, we'll be sitting in front of you.
Thank you, and I wanted to also just sort of follow statements, especially of what Ms. Ladani was saying, is that, you know, I have a student that was in a high school, and one of the things that he said to me that really kind of struck me, and kind of also, you kind of referenced it, was he was in an internal room, but he could hear the boots on the ground, and the fact that he could hear the boots on the ground gave him comfort, and made him feel like everybody knew what they were doing, and you guys were in there right away. So it hasn't gone overlooked and unappreciated that you have planned, your department has planned, and you were there right away. Not every place in the country has been able to say that, and so it's very much appreciated.
So last two things. One, on a lighter side, I will say, students and kids are absolutely the funniest people in the world. They had their own video made-
Oh, yeah.
-by like 10 o'clock of one of my officers, Mr. Power. He is a phenomenal officer, he was a recon Marine, did multiple tours in Afghanistan, and my staff, if, they're dynamic, I just want to tell you, they get the credit. And your teachers, okay? Your teachers, what we saw in the training that we partnered with and brought to them, you know, it's never going to be perfect. We're going to hear a story that this didn't work, that, but when you're looking at like a 95, a 98%, a 99% success rate on actually rolling out the training without thinking, it was phenomenal. It was impressive, and the teacher should never be forgotten, because they are an intricate part of any situation that happens at a school, so.
I'll just follow up on that, and so just, not knowing and not having a child in the school, it's not having School Messenger or anything, all of it was a surprise to later in the day to me, so, which was an interesting experience. But I did hear from several teachers who were just in my social circle from the high school, and they definitely felt prepared, based on all the work that happened over, you know, over the summer, and the plans, and the additional communications and things that have been going out. So I know that that is an area that we looked at for improvement, and there was actual effort put into that, and it seems to have gotten the desired response. I know there's always more work to do, but the feedback that I got from the teachers that I know at the high school was that they felt prepared, they felt the students were prepared, and that there was the right amount of order in place for it to be successful.
Honestly, students were helping. They were joining in. They were part of, you know, they were part of the solution in those critical moments, which is awesome, because they'll use it for the rest of their life.
The last thing that I'd just like to add is, it's really important for parents to be talking with their children, and to provide that space to ask questions, and to kind of decompress in a way, and have those conversations about, how did they feel, and what would you do next, or just open up the dialogue.
Thank you. I'll add that one quote that was passed along to me from a meeting was students reporting to their parents, "Yeah, my teacher's got this, they're all over this," and just being impressed by that. So thank you for the training, and as somebody who's gone through the training in other districts, it works. And, you know, Mr. Pearson was asking what's different, well, you can barricade a room in 60 seconds. Absolutely can.
May I jump in there?
You certainly can.
I think an important piece there, because we have had training, we've had a lot of training in the past.
Yes, you have.
But that is the differentiating factor, is the barricading and having staff. That was the training that was different for us in the fall, which is the actions they were taking. We've had training, but the physical aspect of that, that, I think it's an important differentiator.
It is.
Absolutely, thank you.
Wasn't done 10 years ago.
It's empowering.
Was it done 10 years? I don't think barricading was the standard practice.
Not to that level. I mean, we went hands-on with the teachers. This was, and they were all, they bought in. On Professional Development Day, it was awesome. It was really, there wasn't like stand back, I don't want to get involved, it was, they were, they were hands-on, and they were tested, and they came back and processed it, asked questions, how can we do this, how can we do that, and there's other things that we've done from their feedback to even enhance the training.
Well, folks here have talked and highlighted several of the pillars that you and your staff have mentioned in terms of public safety, and as it pertains to the schools, all the schools in town, including the charter, including Sage, all the schools. And the ones that we've talked about several times at other meetings that just haven't come up tonight, but you did mention your SRO, staffing has been key, and that's something that Foxborough Police has partnered with the school district and the town. Thank you to Dr. Burdos and your team for that. In addition, the infrastructure, and Mr. Utnar has reported out on several meetings about physical plant updates to enhance safety and coordination and partnership with your departments, so families who are listening to this. It goes, it's all around, it's staffing, it's training, it's the money for the infrastructure, it's putting in the infrastructure, and if there's anything anybody else wants to add to that, please go to it. But I just want to let anybody who's still listening at this point know that this is a multi-pronged approach, we never stop talking about it. And just the fact that you're able to come here tonight and update us again is so appreciated. Anything else?
Anytime, I'll make sure I do my homework, though. Thank you, Chief.
A plus.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
And I'll also add, as part of my update, too, the Foxborough Police Department is doing a junior academy, they're starting it over at the Taylor School, and that's four different days in May, so we've got about 50 kids that are really excited, that are going to be taking-
We got the T-shirts bought, and we got the flag, it came in the other day.
T-shirts and flags were bought, according to Chief.
And they're going to be focusing on that, in that Junior Police Academy, as far as like fitness, community service, they're going to have like a special graduation ceremony at the end, so that's another exciting thing.
Fifty-six kids signed up-
That's awesome.
-out of the first two grades, so we didn't, I don't think we said no. We opened it up three times, and eventually I think we have to shut it down.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
So just a couple of other pieces to my update. One, I just want to congratulate Mike Everson. So one of our Foxborough Cable Access volunteers, who is everywhere, he was actually recognized at the Massachusetts Secondary Schools Association Athletic Directors at their annual conference that took place last week. That award is given to someone who, it's the Rodriguez Distinguished Service Award, and so when we think about Mike, whether it's concerts, whether it's being out on athletic fields, all different places volunteering, the program for the award itself, I'll just read for it, it's presented annually to individuals who have voluntarily devoted their time and effort to enter scholastic athletics in schools and communities for their association. So he was nominated out of the District 7 HAWK, which is the, and he was chosen for that, but he was not able to be there in person to accept this award for all of his volunteerism, because he was volunteering and behind the camera. So they had a really, I saw a really nice plaque for him and the program and everything, but I just thought completely appropriate that Mike was not able to be there to receive it in person, because he was too busy volunteering behind a camera. So we know how much we appreciate Foxborough Cable Access and all of the volunteers with FCA, and it really does bring so many more events to access to anyone that wants to be able to watch. So we're definitely appreciative, and we're appreciative that they recognized him as The only other updates that I had, we've got MCAS testing that's taking place this week, we've had kindergarten parent-teacher conferences, a half-day on Friday, school vacation week, believe it or not, is coming up in a couple of weeks. That is coming, Nathan, did you know that?
Nathan knows.
Nathan always knows.
Yes, and I hesitate to even say this next part out loud, because I do not want to jinx anything when I say this, but knock on wood, I think it's important right now, as we get into April. Currently, our last day of school is still remaining at June 16th, the Friday. People have been talking about different days, but I thought I would just mention that at this point in time.
Thank you. Any committee member questions or comments from the Dr. Burdos's update? Please, Ms. Raymond.
I would just echo the fact of, you know, we thank the police department, I want to thank the administration, the teachers, everyone within the school for really helping make a horrible situation an actual success, because I know how difficult that is, and how, you know, traumatic. It's traumatic for everybody who's involved in it, and it is very appreciated that none of us like to pre-plan things and really look at something that can be that type of event, but it really showed, when I first heard about it, I had a sense of, you know, the school's got this, the town has this, and I think a lot of parents and a lot of students felt the same way. And that's really important to be able to have that level of confidence that our school can handle this type of situation, even kind of having an idea that it's a swatting situation, because there's always the possibility that it wasn't. So we really appreciate that, and I wanted to send that out, too.
I just wanted to mention, and I'm not sure maybe Dr. Burdos had mentioned it before, but one other piece that was really wonderful, we have fantastic mental health staff throughout the district, and our school counselors excused themselves from their buildings, moved over to the high school for the remainder of that day, made sure that they could support students and staff, and we also pulled in, we've had Dr. Epstein supporting our mental health team throughout the school year, and we pulled him in in the afternoon to also be a resource and a support for our mental health team outside of the school day as well on that day. So it really was comprehensive, you know, in addition to our work with the Foxborough Police Department, we really made sure after the fact that our teachers felt supported, that our students felt supported, and that everybody got what they needed. If they needed a safe space to decompress and talk through things, we made sure that that was available for them, so that's another really important layer as part of our response to that.
Thank you for that clarification, appreciate it.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you very much, Dr. Burdos, and everyone else who contributed to that robust update.
Oh, I'm sorry, I have one more.
That's fine.
We launched our K-12 Culture and Climate Survey yesterday-
Yes, you did.
-to families and to staff, students in grades five to 12, take that, it'll be closer to, you know, right before or after April vacation.
Yeah.
But that survey is launched, and it's the 11th Annual Survey. You know, as a group here, that we really take that data and use it in many different ways, so encourage our families to take that survey.
They take the data very, very, very seriously, so please, everybody fill it out. Encourage your neighbors to fill it out, too. Thank you, Dr. Burdos. Moving on, further discussion on the FPS mascot. Folks, we'll see that this was put on as information only, I obviously can always be I'll thank again everybody who came to speak, many of them are now watching at home, perhaps a tad more comfortable, many of them are still here, thank you all for staying. For my part, the reason we put it on the agenda for information only tonight was an outpouring of inquiries about, have we been in touch with local tribal leaders? We've heard anecdotal evidence from, and direct evidence, from a few folks who claim indigenous heritage, who were in the area, or people who know folks who are indigenous. And folks heard at last meeting that some inquiries and overtures have been made to local tribes. In the intervening time between last meeting and this, many have responded, and can't be here tonight, obviously we would have already heard from them, but if, I'll call it up, and forgive me while I click and look. We've had direct inquiries from a couple of groups, and I'm just going to list some of them, all right? Sagamore, meaning a leader of the Massachusetts tribe, and member of the Narragansett Historical Preservation Office, a member and leader within the Mashpee-Wampanoag, member and leader of the Western Massachusetts Indian Affairs Office, actually, I think it's the Commissioner. On that was Chair of the Herring Pond Wampanoag Tribe, Tribal Council Member of the Chapoquiddic Chapter of the Wampanoag Tribe, Eastern Band of Cherokee, the Pocasset Wampanoag Tribe, another member of the Mashpee-Wampanoag Tribe, and elder at the Tribe of Ponkapo. So some of the tribal and community leaders within those groups have expressed an interest, willingness and interest to speak to the committee for a Q and A, provided for the convenience of their members, that they could do so via Zoom. They're actively looking for a time that matches a time that we can get together, will ensure that that's a public meeting, so folks can watch and tune in in real time, and it would be largely a Q and A with school committee members. There's that. I will most likely no longer be chair at that time. If I were going to be the chair, I would invite folks to submit questions in advance if they wanted, so we can just kind of curate that as a discussion, but that's a matter for somebody else to decide. So that's the one information that I wanted to put out there, and it needed to be in public meeting to do that, so, but because it's on the agenda, is there any questions or thoughts that committee members have, specifically questions, because as we move forward with this, obviously there's a lot of interest in town, I think it's nice, however not mandatory, to be public with our questions and thoughts maybe we have going on, or pieces of information we might want to have moving forward. And obviously, Ms. Raymond, I say that in full recognition in advance of the end of the meeting, where I say thank you for your service, but this will be Ms. Raymond's last meeting, but you can say whatever the heck you want. No, but if any committee members want to chime in, I appreciate it, and anybody listening, I'm sure would as well.
Anybody else have anything to say before I do?
Well, I do, I do. So I appreciate everyone coming and being here, I know many of you have grown up with, a ton of you, so I lived side-by-side with you for 50 years, and our daughters have grown up together, and I know your family as well, too. I think my greatest struggle in this, having grown up here since 1975, is what happens to us at any given moment, or happens to me, at least. There are times in life when it's, what did you know, when did you know it, and what do you do about it? And that's kind of where I'm at in this situation, not only as a Foxborough resident, but, you know, in my career, I work in high school sports for the past 10 years, and I've been working with schools across the Commonwealth. So I've known about the legislation for years, and how the legislation grinds through the government, I hear the stories from all the other towns. So I think that's my personal greatest struggle in this, is what do I do now, how do I move forward with the information that I know? All my friends and all of you that have all spoken, you can read all the same studies that I can read, and I can read them- same studies that I can read, and I can read them, too. And the, the challenge that I have, I'm not going to speak for anyone else, is that every one of the studies, if you read about it, it, it sends us in a different direction from an image. It sends us in a different direction from an image. The studies are there, and the studies are from Native American tribes, Native American councils across the country. I called Paula Peters, who was referenced by Jack Othlet, I called Jack Othlet. Paula Peters was referenced in Jack's letter. I called Paula myself, and I spoke to Paula, and I've spoken to other tribal leaders. There's, this, to me, where I sit right now, is impossible to get around. There's just too much information out there, too much evidence, and too much indigenous person, extraordinary challenge with mascots and images that are depicting them. And that's, that's where I struggle, is that I, I can read and read and read, and, and I understand it, and it's just, it's taking me to a spot. But I'm not going to also deviate from what I said a month and a half ago, that I believe in the warrior name, and I believe what everyone has stood before us and said, and Tricia did it very well today, by the way. You talked about the warrior spirit to a high, very, very high level. And, and that's what I'm hearing from people. I'm hearing from just about everyone about the warrior spirit. So I got that, and I'm good there. I'm good there, and I think it means something to us. And so that's personally where I'm at on this. I, I just don't think, the more I read, the more it repeats, and it puts us in a really tough spot for images that tribal leaders, all of those that you listed, and all the tribal leaders are saying, is just not respectful. We can't, it's just tough to get around. It's really tough. We can read about the feathers, just the feathers by themselves are tough to get around, because of the image of the eagle feathers for the Native Americans. It's just, there's just too much out there. And that's where we are in 2023. So that's, that's where I'm struggling. I'm just trying to do my homework, but my homework keeps sending me, funneling me in a direction.
Anyone else?
Okay.
Hi, Ms. Raymond.
So I, I wanted to say, I really appreciate the dialogue, and it really makes me feel really good about living in Foxborough and this community, that we're able to have this dialogue. And I hope that students learn that people can fundamentally disagree about things, and be able to have a discussion, and have a dialogue, and do it with respect, and understand that there are two sides, there are three, there are multiple sides to an issue. And it's important to be able to have that discussion. And it's always the question of, well, what do you do when people really disagree? How do you move forward beyond that? And some of the things in just listening tonight and listening other, for me, the warrior name, I think, is really important. I don't see that it necessarily connected to the indigenous background. There is some background to it, but I think for students, for the community, it means so much more than that. And one of the definitions that I kind of saw, and I appreciate that there were some people that spoke about it in defining what warrior means, one of the definitions I saw says, warrior is someone who sacrifices him or herself for the good of others, that cares for the defenseless, that really just keep, I go back to what I said before. It, to me, I see that connection with grit, of just not giving up. I don't see a warrior as just a soldier, or someone who's defeating an enemy. It's much more about a mindset of being part of the community and being someone who is out there, who is struggling and still standing at the end of the day. And that's important. But one of the things that I, and I, sorry, I can't remember who said it specifically, but I see this as a way of moving forward, is find a way to make it honorable. So whatever we're deciding or doing, I think it is important to find a way to make this issue something to, rather than divide the community, bring it together. I, I don't know if the school committee alone can do that. I'd really like to see something where it's more than just the school committee making the decision. I don't have the answers as to how or what that would look like, but I think it is important to get the students involved. Because we should utilize this as an educational opportunity that we, we have a conflict, we have something that could be divisive, how can we make this a move beyond that, to make it something that the community at large can be behind? And it, just going around town, the logo, the name Warrior, does not just sit on the school. It sits on booth, it sits on our fields, it's throughout the community at large. And I would just say, you know, this is my last meeting on the school committee, but that doesn't mean that I am disappearing into the, the vastness of non-volunteerism. If the school committee did decide that they were going to put together another subcommittee, or try and get together with the Board of Selectmen, or something else, I would be willing to help out on that way. Because I do feel very committed to, you know, the, even the work that I do is all about how to be a problem solver, how to move forward, how to help make this rather than something that's going to divide, that's going to be honorable, and help pull people together. I don't know if there's other options, but I'd be willing to help explore it. So I'm just throwing that out there.
Any other thoughts?
I.
Please, Mr. Cantfield.
I'll go ahead. So I think it is, I, I thank you both for, for sharing that. And as I said last week, thank everyone who came and spoke tonight. I do realize, as Mr. Root already said, coming on Tuesday nights is difficult for some people. We do have a community inbox. We received a number of submissions. Those inbox submissions do get on public record as well, and are given the same weight as anybody that comes here and speaks. So if Tuesday night at 6:30, or, yeah, Tuesday, right? Tuesday night at 6:30 does not work for you, but you do have some opinion that you would like to share, or some comment that you'd like to make, the community inbox is available to you. It is public record, and it is given equal weight by all members on this committee. I think the, I don't think, I know, the question I keep asking myself is, one of the fundamental principles of the work that we do as a school community is promote diversity, equity, and inclusion. In all of the work that we do, that means we create environment where everyone has equal opportunity. Hopefully, we minimize any opportunity for any type of either conscious or subconscious bias. My question for this committee is, do the imagery and do the name do anything that takes us away from our mission of diversity, equity, and inclusion? I know what my opinion is. I don't know what our committee thinks about that. But I think that's the question we have to ask ourselves in any decision that we make. Are we doing the work that we've agreed to do in supporting our schools to get to a point where there is pure diversity? There is no inequality?
Thank you, Mr. Cantfield. Oh. Any others? Okay. Folks had asked about cost, and that is, at least by way of the flow chart that I, I put out, which people are, on the committee are free to ignore, was, in my view, putting carts before horses, because the fundamental question is, who are we? And what, what iconography, name, mascot goes along with those ideas, first and foremost? My thought, and again, just mine, is costs are important. But if the community decides, no, this is who we are, stand behind it. Okay, then let's adopt a policy that stands behind it. And if not, then let's not. And then we can work out the costs as we do once we decide community needs. But that was my thought. But in light of that, I know that the administration of our school district, bless their wonderful brains, we haven't asked them directly to cost it out and itemize it, but I know that, I, I, I suspect they've been thinking about it. And with that, I mean, do you have any thoughts, Dr. Berdros, in terms of just in general?
Yes, and I'll turn it over.
Understanding I'm not asking for an itemized list, because that's premature.
I'll turn it over to Bill to give more specifics, but we know that the costs are not what I think people anticipate that they will be.
Before you do that, I'm sorry, this is, Brent, I just want to point out something.
Please.
If we do, do choose to make a change and put it through whatever process that we say we're going to follow to decide what that change is going to be, we give ourselves a couple of things. We are taking a lead on empowering ourselves. We're, we're giving agency to our school community to decide what they want to represent themselves. We're also giving ourselves the agent, the agency to make a decision around the timing, and therefore how we absorb any potential cost over whatever period of time we decide, or the sitting committee at that time decides is appropriate for those changes. So if we talk about numbers, they may be numbers and absolute numbers, in absolute, in this, in this time and in total, but they are not necessarily numbers that would need to be absorbed all at once.
No, and I think that's something we had said two meetings ago, perhaps two, perhaps three meetings ago, whereas that's actually actively a decision, if, if the committee were to put it to a vote, and if a vote had a change of anything, a subsequent decision is, all right, timelines. And that's, that's, that's a decision to make. It's not, you know, it, it's not an if then proposition, or, oh, my gosh, all of a sudden, are we, are we now the unicorns? No, it's not, that's, that's not, that's not a decision that comes comes right in succession or all at once, or not in isolation. And I think, if I'm paraphrasing, people can go back and look at the minutes of the tape, but I think it wasn't a vote, but by consensus, everyone on the committee was like, no, we don't want to be the one solely deciding what would come next, if there was any kind of change whatsoever, that it would be a broader community decision. But that was a snapshot of two, two or three meetings ago. So, sorry, Dr. Berdros, to interrupt.
No, I, I, I think your question is, when we think about where the
Where is it?
logo, the mascot currently is.
Yeah.
What immediately comes to mind would be football helmets, would be scoreboards. Some uniforms, although a lot of those have Foxborough on them, and the gym floor. Bill, you've, you've got a.
Yeah. I, I mean, obviously, based on people requesting the, the information, and some of the numbers that were thrown out there. You know, our band uniforms don't have anything with the logo. They use an F. They're one of the more expensive uniforms if we had to replace it.
They are.
There's only one team left that has actually the logo on it, on the shorts, which is the girls' tennis team, and, but that uniform, as we do with all uniforms, gets cycled, and they're up in the cycle, coming up soon anyway. So it's not a uniform issue. The football team, even though they have the large overcoats, don't have, don't, that doesn't have it. Most of the stuff you see on the football side is, I would say, the coach's swag and, and things of that nature, which obviously has the logos that most people are wearing this way. But it's not on our uniforms. The stickers on the helmets, quite honestly, when the helmets are redone on a regular basis, are replaced, because obviously, they get destroyed over time, because they are just stickers. Pretty much every sticker that's on a scoreboard, almost anywhere, whether it's the Ahern Field, the, the high school, San Burns Field, or the softball field, virtually are just stickers. So replacing those as a, a new symbol, if you so choose, is not really that expensive. The gym floor at the high school probably is, the gym floor and the wrestling mats are probably the two more expensive items. But to be honest with you, we redo the gym floors every year. It's part of our process to keep the floors up. So taking the circle out and putting something else there might cost you $5,000, but we're going to recoat the floors anyways, three, three coats every single year. So that process is not the kind of numbers I was hearing, at least. The wrestling mat is not that old, but it does have the warrior logo in the center of it, so that's an $8,000 to $10,000 a cost in itself. But that's really it. So the, the cost to make a change, if so chosen, is not substantial, in the senses that we heard so many times last year, last week, or two weeks ago, I heard, you know, 300, 400,000. We're not in that situation, but it's still a choice that the community has to make. But it's not, you know, if anything, I think it's, it's relatively, you know, mild cost. I would also say, though, we have never prioritized something like this over security, over curriculum, over anything else.
No.
Our, our security monies are basically, we go through grants, we go through everything, and you can't do everything until you actually make sure that things work. So, you know, in the chief's comments, even this last event showed us a few things that we want to tweak. We wouldn't have known that without that. But, so we continue to make all those changes, and we will make those tweaks now, within our budget, to make sure they happen. So this really is a decision of the community and the, and the school committee to make. But it's, to me, in my sense, and I, I think I've done this long enough to, to understand the budget side of it, this is not a number like we were hearing.
Thank you.
What about all the banners that are in?
The banners would be the one big thing, depending on what you decide, if it's, if that's a historical thing that you're going to erase, or if that's going to stay. But that would be probably, if you decided to, to move them, each banner costs us about $500 to make. Yeah, sixty, exactly. There's 62 in there. So you, that would be a $30,000 thing, if you decided you were going to totally just remake them, or if you were going to change and take the logo off and put something else on. So the choices you can make there. But that, as a single item, if you just said, no, we're going to take that away, then that's, that's a dollar.
And then, isn't there also painting on the field at Ahern?
That's a, that's a wooden plaque that comes off. There's stickers on the, on the scoreboard that can be covered over. The stickers on the scoreboard are actually very small. They're only about this big that have the symbol. The Jack Martinelli sign is a painted sign, but again, a sticker can go right over that, the way they make them nowadays. So again, in looking at it, I'm not going to mitigate what people's concerns are and stuff like that, but I'm, I'm definitely not going to conclude that it's a, you know, not an expense that was being put out there to the community.
Thanks for the context. I mean, again, carts before horses, but it's, if, if people are going to be concerned about a thing as knowable as a number, let's get into knowing the number, I guess, is my, my thought in asking all the questions. So thank you for that, for entertaining that.
There is a cost, and that's, Brent, I just wanted to point out, is, you know, said if the, referenced if the community stands behind it. You know, one of the things that makes Foxborough, I think, a great town is we still have town meeting. You know, not every town has that. You know, I, I didn't grow up here. I grew up in Florida, very, very different there, very county-based. I lived many years, over, over 15 years in North Attaborough, which has a representative town government. I was part of that representative town government. So what makes Foxborough different is that, kind of old school, if you want to call it that, is that every town member has a vote at town meeting. Unfortunately, not every town member shows up to town meeting to vote. But that's a crucial piece that I think we, as school committee members, need to remember, is that we have been very lucky that our budget has, you know, and I'm not going to diminish it, is that the, the school administration, the school committee, the Board of Selectmen, the advisory committee works the advisory committee works very hard on the budget, but we have been very lucky for many years that we get their budgets passed. Not every town has that, not every town situation has that. And so what I'm saying is we don't want this to become a very divisive issue. That is part of what I mean by saying that is we want to make sure, as a school committee, that we're not creating a situation that creates a larger issue and especially regarding budgeting. So I'm just putting that out there to keep in mind that if the community stands behind it, the financial aspects of things, if there was a change, would be less of an issue than if the community does not stand behind it, it will become an issue. So I just want to point that out.
Thank you.
And thank you for the information, Dr. Berdos.
Nathan has a...
Hi, Nathan.
Hi. I didn't prepare anything, so I won't bore you all for five minutes. But I had two points. One was, a number of members have said that the community inbox is always open, and that is totally correct. However, speaking in person is completely different than typing on your phone, computer, and sending it in because there really is no response. There's a typical email that gets sent out to everyone.
Yeah.
And then Tuesday evenings, especially now where spring sports just started, it makes it very difficult for a number of students to show up and speak in person, even though they do have the option to use the community inbox. And my second point was, a number of members have said that they're totally willing to get community input if it goes forward and their change is, like, needs to be made. So I'm wondering why this whole issue can't be brought to the community and have community input and voice and decision from the whole start.
Thanks.
Mr. Donahue?
No, he brought up a valid point. So...
And your comment?
I don't really have a comment. I thought it was just a...
Oh, thanks.
Sarah, I actually would be curious if you have any, do you have feelings one way or other on the input that we've received or the decision that we're making?
I've been listening to everyone, listening to everyone on the committee, and I just feel that between the state legislation, citizen input, I'm in a very similar camp to Michelle, where I just see this divisive issue and I think that community input, and I heard you speak, and I was thinking about Chief Grace talking about teamwork. I think it's just going to take some teamwork to bridge and come up with a solution. But I do feel strongly that state legislation is in place and government's in place and things are moving and it feels similar to how I felt with masks. COVID didn't stop at the town limit. This issue, you know what I mean? This issue is a larger issue than just our town. So that's sort of where I'm at.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Donahue. Lovely. All right. Well, do we want to bring Indigenous people for an open discussion with the committee?
It would be, it could be useful. I think we have a lot of Indigenous, sorry, don't want you to speak in here. I think we have, I think we do have enough information from local nations, but if we have additional questions that we might want to ask, then I think that that could be useful, that could, you know, check more boxes to give people the comfort that we have been considering what we're saying. I think it would be very, we need to be very careful with how that is structured. As Brent had said, it is questions that the school committee is asking of the people that are attending, even if we solicit questions or should solicit questions from the public potentially. But it is a dialogue between the school committee and the representatives of those nations, not an open public forum.
Well, and the, at least from the communique that I have, the folks who had, the various leaders that had expressed an interest in coming do not have interest in sitting in an open public forum. They have interest in being on Zoom, in being able to be able to do this at their homes and whatnot, and at least for the group that, and I can't speak to a person, but the bit that I could glean from looking folks up, that they've done this for other towns as well, at least a few of them. So there's that. And I think, given what I've heard from folks in the community and some questions that committee members have raised, that it could be potentially informative. And for that reason, I'm always on the side of more information. That's just me. So...
My opinion, for what it's worth, at this point, if they're willing to talk to the school committee, I don't see why you wouldn't do it. If you view it as a sign of respect to, you know, if they are willing, if they've reached out, then you really should hear what they have to say.
I'm inclined to agree. So, well, thanks. Thanks, and we'll wait to hear from folks as they...
So we want to try to settle up for our next meeting?
Yes, or when we can arrange it.
Or another meeting, announcing a public meeting?
Yeah, and folks would see it on the agenda.
Just a pointer, I'm not sure, so our, yeah, so our next meeting is when we re-seat and we'll have a new member. So that, I'm not sure that, I think we just need to think about the timing of that. That would be my only thought.
Okay. And I'll wait to hear back from the group and whatnot.
Well, I would propose we, I know we're going to re-seat, I get all that, but we're going to, I would just, we got to just decide what we're going to do. We can spin our wheels, we can keep going, but we got to decide how we're going to get information, how we're going to educate us and the population. So maybe we just have to have the meeting.
Okay.
And hear from them, you know, hear what they say.
So...
I agree.
Thank you. The last thing I would like to add, and this is more general and less to the mascot, more to the concern of that folks had raised in terms of divisiveness, yeah. If folks disagree, this is how grownups make decisions. So we have conversations. We disagree. We disagree humanely. I'd still stand in front of a truck for all your kids, and I know that most of the people here who may agree or disagree with me would do the same for my kids. In fact, many people who spoke on both sides of the mascot have already done untold countless acts of kindness as early as this, or recently as this morning for my own children. And that, I think, is an example to the community in terms of how we make decisions in our town and our society. And we could take people who disagreed most strongly on this issue, and I would have no problem entrusting my safety and that of my kids to any of them, just because I respect people in this town so much. And I think that's okay. And directly to Mr. Uden, no one got on this board to be popular. We got on board to look at spreadsheets and nerdy policies, and now we're having to talk about this stuff. So...
Are we engaging, Brent, or are you speaking to them?
No, I'm not, but I'm just telling you, we're not here to be popular.
Fair enough, thank you.
So there's that. With that, let's move on. And, oh my goodness, we have some donations to...
A vote, policy.
Oh, that's right. Annual school committee vote to approve the FPS policy manual context, and no, we're not taking any community input right now. The policy manual for the Foxborough School Committee and Foxborough Public Schools is robust. We have a policy subcommittee that changes every year, and when new policies need to be looked at because of events in the community or law changes at the legislature or nationally or locally, our policy subcommittee looks at them, proposes changes with lawyers and administration, and then we discuss them here if we need to vote. So, and every year, the school committee has to vote to just approve the whole manual as it is now, understanding it's a snapshot that changes as we change policies. Before we get into this, I'll ask folks in the policy subcommittee, is there anything coming down the pipe?
There is currently nothing that is, there are currently no policy changes planned based on the current manual.
Thank you. Any questions for policy subcommittee, admin, or anybody on the committee about the policy manual or current policies that are in place?
I agree with Rob that nothing coming down the pipe card, so I would move that we approve the Foxborough Public Schools policy manual.
Second.
All those in favor? 500, that is ratified and approved for another year, and we'll see you next year around this time for a similar vote. And with much gratitude, we've got a couple of donations to Foxborough Public Schools that came in that, and for background, folks, if folks donate to the schools, the school committee vets and accepts or doesn't that donation. First up, we have, wow, $3,000 from Ellen Pillsbury. And Mr. Uden, or anybody else want to speak to the specifics of this donation? Otherwise, we can.
Yeah. This is from a giving account, which basically is a charitable donation from Robert and Teresa Dreyfus, who basically put no limitations on how it can be spent. It basically says where it's needed most, so it leaves quite a latitude for, you know, the schools to use it at the high school level. I would assume that this is going to go because it did go to them, and it's for $3,000.
Very nice. I move that we accept the generous donation from the Robert and Teresa Dreyfus Giving Account Fund in the amount of $3,000 with great gratitude.
I second.
All those in favor? Accepted with much gratitude. Thank you.
And then we have a second one.
Yes, we do.
We have a second one, is that correct?
Yes, we do.
John D. Langley Foundation.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson.
This one is in memory of Paul Lozaro, who basically has children in the school district, and what they wanted to do was to support the school district where that child or actually grandchild is. And by doing so, with a $2,500 donation to the school itself, I think the, you know, basically what their primary mission was for funding remedial and enrichment programs for students in need type of thing. So again, some latitude for how it's spent, but with a kind of a bent-on direction it should be used.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Uden.
I move that we gratefully accept the $2,500 grant from the John D. Langley Foundation for the John Ahern Middle School.
I second.
All those in favor? Thank you. Accepted with much gratitude, 500. With that, we move to other matters. Ms. Donahue?
All right, you know I've got something.
What do you got?
So Tyson Tiara's dance is coming up, April 22nd. Always a really exciting and positive event. Lots of wonderful high school volunteers, community warriors, and National Honor Society stepping up to help make that a success. So thank you again to our students. We have another cleanup day. We have Clay Subaru is doing an Earth Day along the lines of Subaru Loves the Earth, and we're going to be cleaning up the Mills Street property at the F Gilbert Hills State Forest there, and cleaning and beautifying. And I just wanted to thank A.J. Dooley. Cleanest bins has graciously offered to come and pick up any of the trash collected that day, so thank you very much. It's also, we also have some students that have volunteered for that, and that's a really exciting Parks and Rec and school partnership with Clay Subaru, so thank you for that. I just, the talk of policy, the policy subcommittee made me think of Babs Kelly, and I have not heard anything from her. I think she stepped down as our M.I.I.A., the Massachusetts Independent Insurance Association. I think that's the acronym. She stepped down as our representative, but I just want to openly say, I don't know who the new representative is. I haven't heard anything. And one of the ways for us to satisfy our requirement is to make sure our policies are all updated, so we probably are aligned, you know what I mean, and can probably check that off the list. But Bill, do you know who the new point person would be? I'm sorry, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I want to kind of say it publicly.
It is somebody in town hall, but I'm not sure.
Okay, well...
Wait, I think that's the first time in four years Bill's been stumped. I think that is the first time you did it. You did it, congratulations.
Yeah, so that's a wonderful, you know, I've gotten a lot from the webinars and things that I've done through the last couple of years. It's not terrible, it's a small-time commitment, but one that we can chip away at because it's a good amount of money off the town budget. Anyway, my PSA is over, and I think that's it for my updates.
Mr. Cantor?
Just a reminder to support what Dr. Berdos said about the climate and culture survey, turning those surveys back in is vitally important to all the data that is collected by our schools so that we can continue to get better. And good luck to the children of the Igo Elementary who are putting on Schoolhouse Rock Live Junior, our kids, sorry, I don't remember which one, this weekend at the Maryland Rodman Performing Arts Center.
Mr. Pearson? No. Ms. Rayman?
Well, I would just say that this has been what a ride it has been, and I'm just sitting here kind of remembering back in 2020 when I was going out in the midst of a pandemic and getting signatures to run for school committee meeting. I had no idea what I was getting myself into at that point in time, but it has truly been an honor to be on the school committee, especially during such a trying time. I'm very glad I did it. Wish I could do more, and like I said before, it's not like I'm disappearing. I'm sure you'll see me on the other side of the table at times, and I really do appreciate working with administration. It has really opened my eyes and made me appreciate what hard work all of you have done and continue to do on a daily basis. It's really important. Keep up the good work, and thank you so much for working with me during these times as well as those who've been with, through this ride throughout. I do appreciate it. So thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you.
So I would like to say thank you on behalf of the Foxborough Schools and the community for your service because it is a volunteer job, and what you get yourself into, you may not realize, particularly in the middle of a pandemic and the amount of time, that I don't think that people really understand the amount of effort, time, heart that goes into this role. Yes, you're representing the community and the schools, whether you have children in the schools or not, but it makes it even sometimes tricky when you do have children in the schools, and it makes that part hard. But making decisions that are in the best interest of kids are what we're all here for, and your insight and what you've been able to offer through subcommittees as well as the committee. Now, growing up in Florida, I think in some of those districts, they pay school committee members as a full-time job. That's not what you have here, so it really is, it's a complete volunteer, but it takes up a lot of time, and so it's very much appreciated from what you bring here, and then I know supporting me and my role as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
My only other matter is the, it's also Janet Gracia's last meeting this evening, and she's listening to us. She is retiring, and she will be taking her last minutes. Really appreciate everything that she has done. I know that you share that sentiment with me. She's there for you as, you know, your resource to the school committee and all of the minutes, but all the ongoing support that she does and helping myself, but... but all the ongoing support that she does, and helping myself, but all of us, with questions and answers that we have, and anytime we have anything, she's willing to just go right out and find that answer, and she does it with a smile.
And tact.
Yes.
Great tact.
Yes. So we are going to miss her in our office, people across the district are going to miss her tremendously, but at the same time, we know that retirement is the exciting next chapter in everyone's life, and I've never met anyone that has regretted that decision. So I'm sure she won't as well, although I know that she will miss all of us, but she will still be in touch. So Janet, I know you're listening. Thank you for all that you do for us.
I'm going to have to go sign the warrants on Tuesdays for a few weeks so I can say goodbye.
Dr. Berdus?
This week is National School Assistant Principals Week. We have four assistant principals in the district that do an amazing job. They're incredibly supportive to our principals. They love kids, they do such a great job with kids, and they're incredibly supportive for our teachers too. So we appreciate you and hope you have a great week. Say thank you to your assistant principals if you see them this week.
Mr. Uken. Mr. Herman. Seven full days and one half day, so not eight days, only seven and a half.
Seven and a half. Sounds great.
Thank you. Thank you. And for my part, I'll pile on to say first, thank you to you, Michelle Raymond. You and I, we're on advisory committee together, and we're both ed liaisons together, and I think I recall having a conversation with you prior to 2020, saying, you should really look at school committee, it's not that bad. I mean, you know, it's great. So it's pretty much a continuation of what we do on EdCom, we look at budgets and we look at policies. It's awesome. It's going to be a lot of the same, and it wasn't at all, at all. And so thank you for, thank you for putting your hat in the ring, and thank you for continuing to serve. The thing I really love about working with you is that you and I think very differently, and our Venn diagrams of what we believe don't always match up, but our goals always do. And for that, it's been just a true pleasure, and it's made me a better committee member, it's made me a better person. And so I thank you for putting yourself out there and taking the time and always speaking your mind and always using your considerable intellect to help all the kids. I really appreciate that. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Brent. I appreciate that.
And next, for Janet, I just want to say thank you to her. We'll get to see her in person, and, you know, we'll make sure of it. But Janet's job, in addition to supporting Dr. Berdus, is to support this committee, and it's like herding cats, turtles, or angry hornets, depending on the day or the week or what's going on. And she does so with such grace, kindness, and some of us as chairs are harder to corral than others. And so for that, I'm so grateful for all the acts of service that she's, countless acts of service that she's done. And my last other matter is to again say thank you, and I meant what I said earlier about issues that we disagree on. I've loved the quality of the respectful discourse that we have in town, so thank you all for participating and being part of that, truly.
I'm making a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Can I, excuse, can I have one moment, please?
We got to adjourn. We got to adjourn, but come on up and chat with us.
That would be the third time you've done that to me, but, sure.
So second?
Yeah, with all that, all those in favor, 500.
Thank you.
And then I know folks had some questions.